Before our meeting and I'll lead us in this prayer. Lord, just thank you for this day. Lord, just thank you for the blessings of life in general. We thank you for being able to live in a country where we have the freedoms that we have. Lord, those freedoms did not come free. Lord, there was prices that were paid and, Lord, we owe that debt to our military, those folks that have bled and died on our, on the souls of war, Lord. And we just pray, Lord, that you would still continue to be with these families that's lost loved ones through these tragedies, Lord. And, Lord, we just pray for our EMS, our sheriff department, all our public service, fire department, all these men and women that work to strive to provide us a safe community. We appreciate each one and the job that they do. Lord, we just thank you for being able to live here in Hart County. We, we just feel like this is one of the greatest counties in the state of Georgia and, and, Lord, we just pray that we would, as leaders, be able to keep it that way. And, Lord, I just thank you for each one of these men that have signed up and, and are willing to provide this service for Hart County and, and our constituents, Lord. I know we got a lot of phone calls today for, the culverts are stocked up and, Lord, just, we pray that they'll just be patient and we'll get all that taken care of. And we thank for, for our road department that has been working to try to clear roads and, and ditches and all for us to have safe travels. Lord, we just pray that you'd go with us. May we always look to you for wisdom and guide us and go with us through this meeting. In the name of prayer, amen.
Let's all stand for our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, y'all. I'll call the order the Tuesday, January tonight, 2024, meeting of the Board of Commissioners. And first thing on the agenda is to election, election of officers for 2024. That includes chairman, vice chairman, and the IBA alternate. So at this time, I'll open the floor up for nominations.
I make a motion to keep the Board of Commissioners officers the same with Chairman Sayer, Vice Chairman Dorsey.
And the IBA alternate.
Yeah, the IBA alternate.
The vice chair is the IBA alternate. We changed that last year.
So the vice chair is the IBA. We don't have a separate position for that?
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett. I have a second.
So Chairman Sayer, Vice Chairman Dorsey.
Yes.
I'll give you a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? I'm kind of, I'm abstaining from the chairman, but I'm voting for the vice chairman. Okay? I don't know if sentence is all put together. So, all right, we'll remain as is. First of all, I welcome each of you here tonight, whether you're here in person or on HTC Channel 3 or on our YouTube channel, Hart County Board of Commissioners. We welcome all of you. And first item is to approve the agenda. We've got some additions.
We have, have a couple additions and one correction. Under old business, under C, 13C, I listed at its first reading on the permit amendment, it's acted as second reading.
I think that is the second reading too. Do you think that's the third?
It didn't second read last meeting. According to the agenda.
I think I made a motion to do it at the first reading last meeting.
First read.
First read. On the manufactured homes. I mean, we're talking, we're talking manufactured.
Manufactured homes, third and final.
It's third and final.
Yeah, that was just, Mr. Commissioner Brown made that motion.
All right, and then I'd add, if you wish the Chamber of Commerce is request for a special beer and wine permit for their year-end awards, there's Adam 13J.
I had not been able to get in touch with anybody at the animal shelter about the situation we got going on there. I couldn't find the number for Pam Stone. I did send her an email, asked her to call me, but I haven't heard back, and that was today, so.
Okay, you want to leave it on or?
Must take it off.
Take it off, okay.
It's on the fair.
And also, I would like to.
Personnel to the litigation session.
Personnel.
Litigation and personnel.
All right, with those amendments, can we get a motion to adopt the?
I can give you a motion.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? Next on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections on those? If not, can we get a motion to approve as written?
So may.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley. If not, we'll call for a vote. All in favor? All right, then we'll go to remarks by anybody, guests, committees, or authorities?
No.
We have none. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads? None. Okay, county administrators report?
All right, I got several things. First of all, the month of June, December financial report. The financials are getting tax money in. Our revenue is up. We've got $2 million fifty-eight thousand ninety-three dollars. Expenses were, were, they should have been at $1 million one hundred fifty-one thousand six thirty-eight. Which left us a surplus for the month of $906,045. A year down, surplus of $113,044. Real property came in at $1,413,887. Losses came in at $325,229. EMS, like I warned you, it's last meeting is going to be down for a month or so because of the change of software. $166,575. Vehicle tag fees came in at $139,583. For the year end, we set that number. It's about $21,5900 expected for revenue, which is about 1% under. Expenses are $134,303 left. We're looking for a 3% surplus in the future. And if anybody has any questions on the financials, I'll be glad to answer them. I've been asked by, we've had a lot of calls about the tax money, the mistake in the billing for the school, 65 and over production. I talked to Karen this afternoon. She, it's her intentions, as quick as Harris gets the full list of everybody that's owed, she's going to cut checks from the tax commissioner's office to each individual person. She said that may be the middle of the last of February when it takes place. But it was not coming through the board. You don't have to. It'd come straight from the tax commissioner's office. But those checks will be cut as soon as she gets to print out from Harris. So you'll be getting a check in the mail for the underpayment, overpayment of your taxes. The other, Commissioner Teasley asked me to look into the Stella deal, which is a direct, which is a satellite TV coverage area. And I went back and pulled. In 2018, we done everything we could and was supposed to do to allow that to happen. I've had a couple of folks call me and I just sent them the whole packet of everything we done. So we have done everything. We do direct TV. I got to reply from them verifying that they have the capabilities and to do that. And we sent a request to all five Georgia TV stations. We got responses back from them that they were willing to do it. And that's a business deal between the satellite people and the TV station. So us as a government, we've done everything we're supposed to do. So we're, we're out of, out of the picture on it. And that's a business deal between businesses.
I pray you check in on that part.
And, and one of my masters hit a little bit on the ISO rating on, on homeowners insurance, fire insurance. We were at a four slash six in 2014. We stayed that way for, for 10 years. They came back in and reevaluated us. And in those 10 years, the way they evaluate things changed. There were some changes, changes. We used to get more credit for our full-time firemen. That dropped by 75%. The credit they give us for having a 40-hour week full-time firemen. So that's one thing. The other thing is response to calls, fire calls. And only thing that counts is active structure fires. Nothing else counts in ISOs eyes. So if it's a fire alarm and it's canceled, none of that makes any difference. You got to be a working structure fire. The amount of personnel they require on scene, if my calculation is right, has doubled. And, and ISO is geared strictly for full-time fire departments, mostly city fire departments. So that's kind of the, the deal. You're evaluated in several categories. Now, I'll quickly go over those categories, just to let people know how we're rated in those categories. You got emergency communication, that's an I-111, receiving the call, dispatching the call, and the communication side. The best you can get is 10 points. We got 9.26. The fire department, and it's broken down in the credit for engine companies, best possible score is six. We got six. Reserve pumpers, we got half a point. That's all you get for reserve pumpers. We got point six, uh, point zero six. Ladder trucks, three's maximum. We got three maximum points. Reserve ladder, let's see, pump capacity, the maximum's three. We got three. Credit for reserve ladders, it's half a point. Smoked on that, and we got 4.09. But that was before we bought the last two ladder trucks. Deployment announces, and I'm not real sure what that is, but it's pre-planning, I think, fire planning, pre-planning for, for homes and businesses. There's possible 10 points there. We got 2.19. Company personnel, here's where we dropped so much from the other, primarily because the rules changed. You got 15 possible points. We got 1.05.
Which one was that again?
Which 15 possible points, we got 1.05.
What was the category again?
That's company response. You know, that's personnel response.
They're looking for six firefighters per pump.
Yes. And then we were required to send three pumpers to every fire. So there's 18 people right there, just to land those three trucks.
But we're shooting ourselves in the foot some of these fires when we 1022 the response.
Uh, no, no, they don't count. It's got to be a working fire.
I understand. But if you've got enough people, whoever's in command at that fire, they may say 1022, any further response.
Well, that may be true on a working, that may be true on a working fire. But fire alarms is maybe what I had in my mind.
But if they're, if it's small structure, for example, a little storage building or something, four people can handle. They may say 1022, any further response. Well, that affects us.
Yep, that could, yeah. If it's a working fire.
And, and go ahead, because I want to say some more things when we get through.
Okay. And the next is training. The state requires, Joey, you know what the state requirements for, for the firemen hours on?
Forty-some hours.
Twenty, 48 hours a year, 5%.
Right. ISO requires 120 hours.
But that's for officers. There's two levels. There's a.
Right. Is that officer level, firefighter or 100, I think. But anyway, ISO requirements are drastically higher than the state requirements to keep the certification. And we're working on that. That was a possible nine, and we got 2.12. We're working on that. We're getting the training up. And once we get all of this stuff repaired, we'll call them back in for another review. We can call them in anytime for review. But we don't want to call them back in until we get everything we can possibly fixed. So that's where we're going with this. And then operational considerations to maximum, we got two. And the next big component, this is water supply. That, that takes up 40% of the total, total classification is water. And what we got, credit for our system, possible 30 points. We got the water supply got 12.64. They don't, they don't, they won't consider the, the way we got to four the first time in 2014 was tankers.
Shuttle.
They don't count shuttles anymore. So that, that was another big change that, that hurt us. For hydrants, hydrants, checking of the hydrants, all that stuff, the highest possible score is three. We got 2.95. We hired a firm to come in and do all that checking, get us called up, get these records called up. And that's where that paid off. That was on that there. Inspection and flow testing, possible seven. We got 6.4. That's, that's, those last two are done by the firemen themselves. The first one, the water supply system, that's actually the water authority where they got water lines drawn. So, and there's a difference, just I have no idea what that is. But they deducted 3.19 points for whatever it is. I'm, I've read and read and read, and I cannot figure out what it is. But community risk deductions is last. There's a 5.5 maximum, and that's pretty much education. Don't be out burning outside stuff like getting kicked your house on fire. Out of a 5.5 possible, we got 4.72. That gives us a total credit of 105.5 possible. We got 52.31. And that's what brought us from a four to a five. So we're working on the problems. The training, we can take care of. The firemen have bought into it. They're showing up. They're doing their training. We're recruiting everything we can do to recruit. We got a new class fixed to start now. Just finished up one class. This is going to take time. And we'll call them back in as quick as we get to where we can improve. There's no use in bringing them back in here if we're not going to improve.
So from the percentage standpoint, we're at 52.31. That's what calculated out. Where do we have to be for four? What's the bridge?
59. something.
So have we looked at it from a reverse engineering standpoint, backing our way through?
Correct.
Where we got to go?
Correct. I mean, and the only place we're going to be able to pick it up is either in water or, or in the training or response. That's the biggest spot we can pick it up at.
So I want to say something too, and I've mentioned this many times, being in the volunteer fire department. Our numbers continue to go down. There's, there's more firemen that are going to get out of the fire department this year and start drawing their pension. And every year that passes, there's more leaving than there are coming in. And I know there's some folks who've got all their hopes in the college and career academy that that's going to solve the problem. The problem is, one, recruiting, then getting them through the training and the certification part, and then having them stay active.
Correct.
That's where you lose people.
And honestly, on the, on the longer range plan, we passed the splash. If we're in the splash two, we, at some point in time, we're going to have to look for some paid full-time 24-hour people. Before you can do that, you're going to have the facility to keep them in. So in the splash six, that little flooded money for fire service included either remodeling, building a new station, whatever, at Central. You want Central located, because if you put them all by chance at the edge, they're not going to do the folks on the other side of the county any good. So that's a long range. That, that's not going to happen quick. But it, it is in the plans to work towards that goal. And when we do, again, you gentlemen will have to decide. We got to pay for that somehow or another. You'd have to do it. Most everybody does it with the military rate for fire service. Again, just prepare people down the road. Sometimes at some point, that's coming. And, and we, we chase the ISO, but each individual is going to have to look at it at some point down the road, whether the increase in his mileage versus your increase in your insurance, which one's going to balance out best for the individual, property owner, taxpayer. That's, again, that's several years down the road, but that's coming. So anyway, that's, that's where we at right now. We're, we're trying to, in other words, now, we have increased. At this, the last time I looked at the paperwork from, from the fire department last week, we were about 75% of training where we should be for optimal purpose. We get, we get another, and we got to have two consecutive years. That's another thing. It's got, you can't, you do it one year. You got to have two consecutive years of those numbers. So we're building towards, as quick as we get those numbers. If we got the phone, we'll call them, come back in and register again. But that's where we at.
How many, how many is in this class, firefighter class, do you know of?
Well, we were trying to figure that out today.
We got multiple counties, multiple jurisdictions.
Right. We got, we got some in the city of Livonia. We got some from Madison County, I think. We got five or six from Hart County, but I'm not sure how many is coming through the college and career academy. Those kids may not be but 16, 17 years old.
And they're not going to help you?
They're not going to help us. But if they stay interested when they turn 18, then they can get their certification. They've already got their, they've already got the education. They'll have to get the certification once they get 18. Hopefully, they'll still be interested. Again, at least it's some, it's something we're trying to, to do. I mean, but nothing's a quick fix. Nothing at all is going to be a quick fix.
So therein lies the problem. It's all being driven by full-time fire chiefs with full-time battalions. And we all know, we've got volunteers out here who, a lot of people work, do, do jobs. They have family commitments. They have a life outside of the work. And it is hard to meet those requirements. It is tough.
There was legislation passed several years ago where there was supposed to be a volunteer board appointed by the governor to oversee this kind of stuff. You got, you got the full-time people there. Everybody on that board, full-time chiefs, full-time department. The governor passed it, but he's never appointed the board. A volunteer chief, whatever, just look at it from the volunteer fire department side. And I'm not sure why that hadn't been done, where it's a lack of funding or what. Well, maybe it's something we need to check in with the.
Yeah. That was my question, was the, I, so why, why is there not a volunteer presence? And who appoints them? You know, by chance, do they get appointed every year?
I'm not sure how long their terms are.
And is it legislature who appoints them or the governor?
Governor does.
I think that'd be a good start for us. Volunteer board. Volunteer board. That's up to the.
So the governor does not.
And that, that, that covers training and certifications, all that, that overdoes. That really don't have anything to do with ISO now. But then on the state level, their requirements. But they would have a lot of pull with ISO.
It looks like the ISO would work closer with the state as far as the mandate.
ISO is owned by insurance counties. That's who owns ISO.
That explains why they don't work.
That's who owns ISO, is the insurance. So, okay, again, if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to, or cause more confusion, whichever. But that's, that's where we at, and that's one. And my understanding, the folks I've talked to have been one, one insurance company, and I might call them names primarily. Me as a citizen, me as an individual, if mine goes up, I'm going shopping. So you may want to express that to whatever agency you're dealing with. If they go up on the rates, it's worth looking into. I think that's all I got.
But to that comment, as far as the recruiting and the school system, I, I want to say I appreciate the school system providing the means and the, the pathway so that.
Correct.
So they can get credit for taking these classes and, and our volunteer firemen who helped set this up. And I appreciate.
Yeah, like I say, it's, it's a good, it's a good long-range plan. It's a good long-range plan, it really is.
Ms. Henry, do you have something you want to, can you come, can you come to the front?
How are we currently prepared? That's all I want.
We advertise, we beg, we do whatever. And we're getting out, it's, it's a generational thing. It's, it's, you used to, you'd have three generations of the same family. That don't happen much anymore. Very seldom. So, I mean, I wish I had a mentor to it, but I don't.
All right. Anything else on that subject?
What would really make the college and career academy, the career academy, an asset for this program was if they do these classes in the evening when people care. Do one, maybe in the evening, one quarter, and maybe.
Okay.
That would help.
Yeah, to, to address, and our classes will be in the evenings. They don't do the classes at the college and career academy. We do the classes in our classroom at the fire training center. They get credit.
During the day too, because I know a couple of individuals that work at night that would want.
Right, again.
That's what we really need to help.
Yeah, yeah, daytime. We, we got, we got a lot more response at night than we do. Because everybody's working. It's not, the people just bad in the daytime. Most people working at daytime. One, let me hit one more thing. We had a lot of rain, if y'all didn't notice. Best I can tell, a little over six inches. During different times, we probably had 25 to 30 roads with water crossing. I'm not familiar, but one actual pipe we had to blow out. But I'll give the sheriff's office, the fire department, code enforcement, everybody credit, road department special credit. I mean, it wasn't chaos. It was, it was like clockwork. And, and they all got it taken care of. And thankfully, the rain quit and every water receded and, and all back open. But our usual, same old roads, we'd cut them closed every time. I think we got nine of them closed right now. But I appreciate everybody, everybody pitching in dispatch, everybody. Everybody was busy for several hours today. And I certainly appreciate it. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Chair. As far as chairman's report, I would like, I know it's been a while since we have met, but would like to inform everyone that we voted on November the 15th to request that GDOT not bill the roundabout at Bow Church Road. And, and we did get a response. We sent a letter on November the 17th, and GDOT responded back on December the 21st that they agreed with us that there was no need for a roundabout there. So that was a blessing just to see the state actually agreed with us one time. So that's just a matter of information. But that's all I have at this time. We'll move on to district. want to.
Right, again.
That's what we really need to help.
Yeah, yeah, daytime, we got, we got a lot more response at night than we're doing, because everybody's working, it's not, the people just bad in the daytime, most people working in the daytime. Let me hit one more thing, we had a lot of rain, if y'all didn't notice. Best I can tell, a little over six inches. During different times, we probably had twenty-five to thirty roads with water crossing. I'm not familiar, but one actual pipe we had to blow out. But I'll give the sheriff's office, the fire department, code enforcement, everybody credit, road department special credit. I mean, it wasn't chaos, it was, it was like clockwork, and they all got it taken care of, and thankfully the rain quit and every water receded and it all back open, but our usual, same old roads, we'd cut them closed every time. I think we got nine of them closed right now. But I appreciate everybody, everybody pitching in dispatch, everybody, everybody was busy for several hours today, and I certainly appreciate it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Chair. As far as chairman's report, I would like, I know it's been a while since we have met, but would like to inform everyone that we voted on November the fifteenth to request that G dot not build the roundabout at Bow Church Road. And we did get a response, we sent a letter on November the seventeenth, and G dot responded back on December the twenty-first, that they agreed with us, that there was no need for a roundabout there. So that was a blessing, just to see the state actually agreed with us one time, so that's just a matter of information, but that's all I have at this time. We'll move on to District One, Commissioner Bennett.
I don't have a whole lot for my district, I'd just like to say I hope everybody had a happy holiday, and also in a rate that, you know, how thankful that I am for our county being out there today. I saw them in two different locations, and also saw the state, the state was on their highways today as well, they had water going over the road up at Reed Creek and down on District One as well. Anyway, I'd like to thank all those people for being out there and making sure that our roads stay safe and working hard, and hopefully they're all at home now, you know, resting. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, District Two.
I'd like to educate the same thing about our public works, public safety, first responders, EMS, we got Mike Adams in here, appreciate what they do, and all our county employees behind the scene, and that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll move to District Four, Commissioner Brown.
Yeah, just echoing them, thanks to everyone today for our public works out there working hard, and I know a lot of folks stayed in today, stayed home from work or stayed home from school, but those guys were out there in the storm weathering it and making sure that everybody stayed safe. I, real quick, just on that discussion with Terrell, I just encourage all of us as a board, let's keep that in the forefront of our minds, and I don't know if we potentially look at a work session, potentially work at, you know, maybe fifteen minutes after one of our meetings, but let's just try to spearhead some ideas of how we can give back to these guys and possibly come up with some ideas as far as helping with recruitment, you know, helping with their planning, whatever it may be. But I think we all win by, you know, coming together and making this a priority, especially here, first of the year, and try to, try to get that right and back where it needs to be. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. District Five, Mr. Dorsey.
Yeah, I was gonna talk about the roundabout that worked hard to get G dot to put the four-way stop, and then they come back, and we've told them multiple times that we didn't need a roundabout there, and had some conversations with Jason Dykes, who suggested we send that letter, so that's taken care of. I did spend some time with Representative Powell last Friday, trying to get some funding for the roads in District Five that were destroyed and torn up by the bridge that was out. One of the roads that was completely left off of the state's list was Beaver Dam Farm. So we did ride all those roads and looked at that. Hopefully, we'll have an answer here in the next week or so, so we can get started, hopefully, fixing some of those. I do, I do want to make sure this stays on our radar. We are participating with Archway. Been a long time since I seen a project with counties getting anything out of, and we're funding it twelve thousand dollars a year. We've asked that the parking area downtown be looked at, which is a joint request with city and the county, it's yet to be done. There's some money that we could be using for other things to get some of these projects done, so I just want everybody to be aware of that, because we are spending twelve thousand dollars a year for Archway, and I don't think we've seen an update in quite some time, nor have seen a project that we've asked to be working on, working on. And I do also want to echo the sentiments for all the folks at the road department, emergency services, and everybody for their efforts. It's, it's really, it's a real good feeling to know things move smoothly, when you listen to things on the radio, there's a lot happens, there's a lot of moving parts, and it just goes to show you, you're prepared for these type of emergencies, so kudos to all involved. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to twelve eight, Chapter Fifty, Manufactured Mobile Home Ordinance. Take this as a third and final reading.
Motion to take the third and final reading, Chapter Fifty, Manufactured Mobile Home Ordinance.
Give me second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, that's five of eight. All right, we'll move on to the board and authority advertising for twenty twenty-four.
Well, yeah, I included the policy in your packet. We voted several years ago to do one advertising, first year for all the boards coming up. We just need y'all's permission or instructions to send out those advertisements.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, that's five of eight. All right, and then we'll move on to twelve C, amendment to building permits, Chapter Eighteen.
This basically amends the building permits to match the land development standards we just passed, there's a requirement in there for certain sites, subdivision, and we had to amend the building permit section to accommodate for that sort of verification.
Okay, we have a motion to take this, now are we correct on the second reading?
Correct, on the second reading.
Take this as a second reading?
So may.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, that's five of eight. We'll move on down to new business, City of Horpul annexation. You have that in your packet, and this is where the city of Horpul is notified on anexation. Excuse me. Down Highland Avenue. As far as the state code, it meets the qualifications, one-eighth of the boundary of fifty foot, whichever is less, and it meets that. I don't see where it interferes with any kind of agriculture, and I, it fits our comprehensive plan.
We got a problem, I think, we got an unincorporated island that's gonna be created by this.
Where is it at?
I fifty-seven oh twenty-one. That is a county piece of property that's gonna be completely surrounded by city. It is a diagonal touch, and that's gonna be a question for Kim. But the definition, it basically creates an island.
How many feet is in the diagonal?
Has nothing to do with that.
You said I fifty-seven B twenty-one D?
This is your closest, will be your closest remaining county property to this section. That's county property, county, not property, county, county, end of county, not city. So you got a cut from right there at the point, I'm not sure.
But it's surrounded by the definition.
Surrounded, again, that's, that's, pretty question. I mean, I know there's a fifty-foot boundary on touching the city property, but I'm not sure what it is on the county. I mean, I don't know.
There, there is no regulation that I've read on that. My concern with that little piece was, how would you get services to it? I mean, that piece behind it is landlocked.
It's owned by the same people.
Well, it is.
Yeah, twenty-two and twenty-one are the same one.
Three girls, but it's the same holder, probably.
Well, they do, and technically, they would allow you to get services there, but if they sold that piece in the back, that was the only thing that really truly bothered me is, how do you get to it otherwise?
Would it not landlock it if they sold the one in the back? There has to be an easement to it.
Well, yeah, there'd have to be an easement, we'd have to deal with that later.
We can legally landlock the piece of property.
You can legally landlock it, you can't legally argue that you landlocked it.
You can landlock your sale, but you can't sell landlocked.
Well, you can sell landlocked, they would just be a lawsuit over it.
Yeah, probably. So twenty-two's in the city, but I'm referring to I fifty-seven B.
Yeah, that was in the city.
But twenty-one is in the county, but it's the same people.
If y'all don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Leverett what his opinion would be on that. It may be that they want to come back and annex them both in.
That's two different owners.
I mean, that could be a separate annexation.
But the way it's defined, I mean, it is completely surrounded.
Except for, except for one small point.
That little corner. That corner.
Is it just a corner?
That's it. Other than that.
I mean, these little drawings we got here, they don't show the footage in the book.
Concentrate them a little bit, I can be there. And I want to get the, right now, we're just attached now, it gets out huge, so you can't easily, you're a little poor.
The other thing too, if you look at this, you don't have it pulled up. So, so Highland Avenue. It don't matter, it's why. Right there. So the city limit sign is just past Holly Street, right there, a little further to the left, here, if you, the other way, that's right.
But it should be right there.
Yeah, that's right. So the city just recently, that's a county road, so the city paved a section of Highland Avenue that's a county road. With this being a county road, we just recently did our subdivision ordinance on a county road, and I think we gotta be consistent here, that we require the driveways to be a minimum of three hundred feet apart. The property will be annexed in the city, but they still have to come to our county road. That's the other question that I got, and I'm talking to some of the city council members, they seem to have an issue with this too.
They seem to have what?
An issue with the driveway access.
I look at it from the point of view of, would that be a proper objection? And of course, it's not one of the delineated statutory objections.
Not an objection, but if it's gonna be a county road, and we're requiring other people who are subdividing property, when they access our county road, for the driveways to be three hundred feet apart, I think that is a valid point here that we request that. Because they're coming, they come across our right of way.
I don't think it would hurt to request it.
Because the city will only have control unless it's both sides, and the way this is gonna be, this side down below is county, and then the part to be annexed would then be city, but so the county's still responsible for the road.
As far as it goes from here, at this point here, down is county, I mean, that's where.
That's not gonna change.
Yeah, that's where, for the county, the city to be rugged is above the, if the city got property, property on both sides, it's a city road, city street. If it's one side, for whatever reason, will always be just county. So that's where that, that's coming in at.
And the whole purpose of spreading these driveways out was for safety purposes. And if that's just a cul-de-sac or something, and all of them coming out on one, I'm good with that, but they need to be three hundred feet apart, I think, if that's what we're gonna require county developers to develop on existing county roads.
On the annexation though, that was quickly made, the city would have to be the one to protect, the violence that we have upon the annexation.
Unless y'all could stop somebody from accessing a county road that abuts to it.
We're not trying to stop, we're just trying to minimize the driveway cuts, that's what we're trying to do here. And Charlie, you back there, I hope you don't have a problem with that. The whole purpose we're trying to do is so we don't have school bus stops every fifty feet, like we do up on Mount Hebron Road, and we're gonna have on Liberty Hill Road. I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but just.
No, I don't have a problem, but the problem is, is that we're asking to annex the property to the city, and what's we do, and we would call them the city's own, zoning restrictions.
But you gotta access, you gotta access a county road.
Mr. Pierce, if you would come up to the front, so people can hear at home.
Hi, thank you, I'm Charlie Pierce. Yeah, we're just simply requesting that our property be annexed into the city. Any development from that point forward would obviously have to fall under the city's zoning ordinances, of course, I mean, of course, I'm aware of that. And, you know, other, I mean, any other questions while I'm here? And no, it doesn't create an island by our definition.
Okay. We're waiting on our attorney to look at it, some folks seem to think that it does, because it gets surrounded, as shown in some of the handbooks.
I would contest, those people are wrong, but yeah, sure, we'll let it play out.
Okay. Is this your proposal?
No, that's, that's one of the deeds, that's, that's one of the pieces of land that, that's recorded.
Okay, yeah.
And so that's one of the, you know, this piece of property was, was put together, you know, in several parcels, so that was just a recorded deed. This is, I mean, it's all one piece of property, and, you know, I own the property in the city that abuts it, and I would like to add a little bit to my backyards. Actually, the house on fifty-one Holly Street, which is, if you, you know, right up under the one fifty-seven B zero two three, I'll put the mouse on it, if this is the computer.
Yeah, you can just say that.
This house right here. So I own that house, and the fence in the backyard is about twenty feet beyond the county, you know, the city-county line, and we would just like to, I'd like to increase some, some property on it. And now I have, however, put in an idea of a sketch layout that we could potentially do on these lots, I mean, nothing's, you know, I haven't decided anything, but again, I'm just simply exercising my right to have my land annexed into the city, and then once we do so, then I'll work with city officials and the zoning, you know, as, as required to, you know, do what all is necessary for our one designation.
Just to be correct, Mr. Pierce, you said I fifty-seven B zero two three on Holly Street.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, if you see, I know it's hard, it's hard to see right here, but I've got, you see where that mouse is hovering over that piece of property right there? You see that house? So I own all this property as well, which is in the city currently, so, you know, the main reason behind the ball, behind this annexation, again, you know, not that I feel like I need to give a reasoning other than I would like to annex my property into the city, and I'd like to exercise that right, but is the fact that I've got a fence in this backyard, and this fence, if you'll sort of follow this cursor, sort of sticks out into the, sticks out into the county, and I'd like to push that line back a little bit and just sort of encapsulate that fence and have it into the city property as well. So, yeah.
If you annex it, it's all gonna be in the city.
I'm sorry.
If you annex it.
That's right, I want it all, I want it all in the city.
So you paying city and county taxes, and they don't own that rough, any idea?
Yeah, that's the garage for the guy that lives in this click on that piece of parcel. That's that guy's garage, yeah, that's right. Mr. and Miss, Mr. and Miss Carlson, that's correct, yeah. That's right, but it touches back there on the back corner, so again, it's not an island. I mean, clearly, it's clearly not. That's correct, yeah.
I'm not trying to figure out how, how you gain access to whatever this building is here.
Well, right now, it's in that, I mean, that's down that guy's driveway, because he's got like a little shop back there.
There's a lot of properties back there, I wonder who, how you gain access.
There's actually a, if you'll, let me zoom out here, Terrell. There's actually a, if you zoom out here, there's actually a little road that sort of spurs off of, right here at the fork of the road where Highland turns. spurs off of, right here at the fork of the road where Highland turns into, I believe, Scott's Mill, there's a little dirt road that accesses all the way back in there that some of the property is owned by Mr. Wilkins and Mr. Crump, you know, several different parcels of, of land back there. And I believe all, all that property, you know, is, is, most of it, most of it isn't built on, but they, they address, I think, you know, they front a little, like a little access road that goes back, back there. I don't, I mean, I don't know whose road that is, but.
Yeah, 684 and 688 Highland Avenue.
Yeah, it's just a small, I mean, I would equate it to like a little pig path, but, you know, nonetheless, I mean, people do go down it. A lot of these people that are in this area here, if I can get that, a lot of the people that are in, in this area right in here, you know, their, their driveway is actually like front on that, some of these properties.
Front on that big guy?
I believe so, I believe so. There's, there's several houses and trailers or whatnot. I haven't been all the way down that road, so, I mean, there's.
The annexes are on the front.
There's a person.
Highland Avenue.
There's a person all the way back here that has a house that's, you know, or, or a structure. I mean, again, I don't know if anyone lives there, I don't know what the deal is, but, I mean, that, that person says 688 Highland Avenue, you know, I don't know if he, this is his driveway, if it's, I don't know, because.
I mean, it looks like that, that road you're referring to looks like it's the driveway for 684.
It could be, it, it sort of wraps on around a little bit more, you know, again, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's not part of my piece of property that I'm, I'm having annexed, I'm not real sure, but this is, this is, this is the part of my property, this is the other part of the property, and again, I'd like for it all to be in one municipality.
Kim, as, as far as the initial lot issue of I-57B021, we're talking about creating an island, do you see an issue there, that there's an island?
Talked to Rob, she said. No way we can take any action on this tonight till we get that clarification.
Why can't we take action based on contingency, the lawyer's opinion?
Well, you could, but I'd like to know what the actual was before we took any action. I mean, if it is, it is, if it's not, it's not. But also, I feel like we need to address the driveway situation, too, because there has.
Again, I would just like to.
Have some discussion with some council members.
Again, I would just, I'm simply exercising my right to have my property brought into the city. I'm not, I presented a, a sketch drawing of what we could potentially do with it. Again, I'll address that with city officials and zoning board.
We talked to them, too, so.
Well, this property back here, you're talking about creating an island, there has to be an access slash easement or something to it by the property owner.
No, because it's the same people on the front side.
And actually, I mean, my attorney couldn't make it tonight. I mean, he could, he could have, he apologized, he could speak on my behalf, but from my understanding, according to OCGA 3636-113, which is, which is the, essentially the, the code section that allows me to do this, and under what criteria this can be denied, none of those, none of those points have anything to do with how far driveways are from one another, so I would contest that that's immaterial to this request.
Perfectly fine, you entitled your opinion.
Yeah.
But an incorporated island does stop it.
Okay. Playing devil's advocate here, Kim, if it is an island for some reason on 21, what then? What would your advice be there? I mean, if it's creating an island on 021 in the back, what is that? Mr. Pierce, you give him an easement, can you?
That's following the city then to recognize that that's an island and that may be a problem. I'm looking for God's mail.
Well, I mean, don't recruit logic, if this person pulls theirs in, that would do it.
I see a case where it 10 foot through, make it, I don't know how much, I think that is.
This is just a corner to corner, is what it looks like on the flat.
Like on the flat, corner to corner, so it may actually be no foot.
We all know that's not a legal document up there also.
I'm looking at flat.
Okay.
It's flat, that is incorporated here, the one that's called sketch and draw, and that's corner to corner on there.
And is there a defined number of feet or amount of space?
No, it's just an easyable access.
I seen it said you can do an easement, can't you?
That's what, I thought she said you couldn't do an easement.
I thought that's what she said, too. Well, surrounded by city property, what would be, that's the issue.
I'd make a motion that we approve the annexation based on contingent upon the lawyer's opinion is what they find out as far as if it creates an island or not, because Georgia law does say that we cannot annex property that will create an unincorporated island. Georgia law says that.
I'll give you a second. Should we, should we, Kim, make sure that that's worded correctly, and how it needs to be worded in the sense of, he's making a motion, he's got a second here to approve it, and basically, if this comes back as an issue as an island, well, that may all, we're, we're good there, and if it's not an issue, it goes through, correct?
Maybe something we need to get the county survey or the local.
That's why I think we need to, don't take any action on this tonight, we've got time. There's too many factors right now that need to be clarified, because, as Kim said, we may have to get somebody to go out there and survey it so she can see it. We're looking at it on paper, the way it's drawn, it, this could set a precedent going forward.
How many days we got?
I'm surprised.
We've got this notice, we've got this number.
Forty-five days, I think is what it is.
Forty-five or 30?
It's 45.
So we got time to make.
Isn't it 45 now, Kim?
Will we still be in the 30 day? Will we still be in the 30 day?
Because they've got 30 days to notify us now, and that's when this was received.
Yeah, I mean, so I receive the information as well at the time frame, no question about that. I want about the time, play for hours long.
Planning on zoning is not gonna hear it till the 25th. But, Kim, if you could just confirm that, no January, that it's 45 days.
But, now that 45 days from the time we, we received.
From the time the annexation application is submitted, I think is what it is. I can't remember all these days. But it used to be five, they had to notify us within five days, that was changed to 30 days, and then we had, I can't remember how many days.
City has asked county 30 days after, within 30 days after the request, county has 45 to file objection.
That's what I thought.
Probably, we got 45, I knew it 45.
So we actually have to the end of January, basically.
Right, we, we got time for another meeting, I mean, there'll be a meeting scheduled meeting.
I'm gonna make a motion, we table this.
Well, we got a motion second, I'll rescind my motion.
I'll make it.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion, we table this till we get clarification from a legal standpoint regarding this unincorporated island potential.
Commissioner Dorsey made a motion that, from a legal standpoint of an unincorporated island, he would have the legal services to check into this. Have a second.
And add to that, check into it before the, it expires.
One minute, that's what we're doing, basically just putting it off the next meeting.
Okay, I'll give you a second then.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett. Any other discussion, any questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. Okay. All right, we'll move on to credit for experience in jail.
Sheriff Cleveland has asked for a new hire to be given credit for, I think it's two years to her.
Yes.
And I cannot remember the employee's name like you do.
Scott Trotter.
Yeah, that's, but that's what he's asked for, two years, as a certified detention officer.
Is he already working?
Uh, has he started yet? Started last week. Started in December, it'd be back up to December.
Make it retro to his hire date.
Second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. Experience for EMS.
Go on, Mr. Adams.
Yeah, Mr. Mike Adams with us tonight, EMS director.
Back in June, we hired Stone Norris full-time, and I should have came, I failed to get by here quicker, but he's got four years, four years' experience in EMS, so I may give him two years' credit for experience, and also Stone just become a paramedic for us, too, so.
That's good, good news.
And we want to make this retroactive, back to his hire date.
And it was in September?
June.
June 29th?
Well, is that gonna cause you problems on fiscal years?
I don't know, I'm being one.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve this request.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. Thank you, man.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Credit for experience, rate department.
Yes, Shannon's hired John Schalbach, he's worked with us before. He questioned, he'd be given four years' credit, and has a equipment operator, too. He worked, he probably worked with us eight years previously, so he'd give him half credit, as we always do.
I'll make a motion, what do you say? I'll give you a second.
I think it's, I think it's the first paid period on him.
Motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Bennett, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. All right, now we'll move on to experience for maintenance shop.
Yeah, he has hired Andy Fortson, he's requested to give him six years of credit, has a grade 16 mechanic. I think he's had 20, 25 years' experience as a mechanic in different places. That's his request, his six years' credit at a grade 16 mechanic.
I'll make a motion, we approve that request.
I'll give you a second.
Motion by Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Bennett, any discussion?
No need to be any retro on this, he, he just has been hired, just paid here.
Okay, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, all right, this is 508. It's good to see all these people that's wanting to work here in Hart County.
It is.
I mean, you know, everything's.
That guy's a good mechanic, too, I know him.
All right, next thing, 2024 election qualifying fees resolution.
Correct, these, these are, most of you probably know, but just for the public, these are set by the entry level salaries based by the state, and it's a certain percentage of each entry level salary, that's what sets these, these prices, not us, we just don't wrap something, it's come from the state.
I'll make a motion, we approve qualifying fees at 3%.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Bennett, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. Now we'll move on to carpet replacement in the main courtroom.
Yeah, that carpet's been in there many, many years, and Frankie can attest to the shape it's in, I'm sure he's up there all the time. And like I say, we got, we attempted to get two prices from the two local suppliers, both of them came, measured, and had the same set of information, one never returned our quote, the other one did, the quote was for $9,000.
$61.
$61, yeah. And we can pay for that out of the, the parking money.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Bennett, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion?
Is this gonna be a dark color that doesn't show a lot of dirt? I don't pick colors.
Can we go with a shag carpet?
If it, no, yeah, what it is, is kind of green shag, word. No, Frank, Frank can then pick the color, just something all the court has his guy.
Let's just put Frankie in charge of this.
It's not this one, this is right here, it's cobeline, right here, buddy.
It's gonna be red wires, and they lay those in.
Like those big squares?
Right. Bourbon carpet, I don't know what to say.
Are they gonna take benches out of it?
But it's squares, if you have a problem.
Yeah, that includes moving everything, all the trim, everything.
That was the first thing coming to my mind, I thought it was a good price.
Right.
All right, we got a motion.
Got a motion in a second then.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, this is 508. We were gonna, we took.
We took that off.
So now we're moving on to statewide mutual aid agreement.
Basically, it's just a renewal of the one we've been involved in for many years, we renew it every, every so many years, mainly because the signatures change, but it's exactly the same thing that ACCG came up with many years ago, so there's nothing, there's nothing new in it at all.
I make a motion, we adopt.
And just so the public know, this is a mutual aid for every other, for every state agency, every other county statewide. If you don't have this in place, you don't get refunded your money if you have it in disaster. Plus, the, the policy helping one another out, that's, that's important, too, but you can't recruit the courses without this in place.
Okay. We got a motion, Commissioner Teasley's second, any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. Now we come to the Chamber of Commerce, the special events permit.
Correct, this is for the Chamber's event on 12724, it's from 5:00 to 10:00, it's at the Wide Oak Building, go Mount Holly Springs Road, everything's in order with the application, they are a 501(c)(6) organization, so their tactics, and they qualify under our orders.
I can give you a motion, then we accept this special events request.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by Commissioner Teasley, any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, this is 508. All right, so we'll move on to public comment, anyone here would like to speak in public comment? For new business, yes. Now, this is not going to regard to any personal attacks to any of the commissioners or those sorts of things, okay? All right, come on.
Good gosh.
I thought with the new year, we were just gonna designate one person to take out the personal tax.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
All right, let's see, I'm not sure I got this thing on. All right. All right, my name is Adella Harder. I am here tonight to approach the board regarding the intersection of Paines Creek, Bowman Hill, Mount Olivet, and John Fleming Roads. I'm requesting, I mean, this is from a stand, this is from a safety standpoint, I'm requesting that a speed table be placed to stop the majority of the drivers from using the road as a continuous road or a change of direction of the traffic. Currently, there are four stop signs, and for the most part, only one seems to be followed, and also, the whole intersection is confusing especially to visitors. The amount of vehicles that don't follow the signs or yield signs average between 18 and 22 vehicles daily, and for the record, I have cameras around the home, I'm just not sitting out there counting, you know, vehicles. I have witnessed three wrecks at this intersection, one was reported, the other two were not. Just as recent as Christmas weekend, my entire family witnessed a car traveling towards Paines Creek, lost control, was screeching tires, but regained control before either running into the power pole or my yard or a tree. The noise terrified my whole entire family, so we ran outside to see if the car was in a ditch, but it was gone. I took photos of the tire marks for record. I took photos of the tire marks for record. I am baffled at the people that ignore the signs that have even put, that the signs I even put out myself to try and to make people slow down. It worked for about a week and that was it. I can be outside literally standing right there and people just avoid all the signs, yield signs, and just keep going like it's just one complete solid road. The summer months, there are people at the campground, which adds more traffic, which includes campers, boats, trailers, visitors jog, bike, walk dogs, visit the cemetery almost daily. However, that doesn't slow most people down and the one continuous road flow still occurs. I started this process in October, as I did speak to my county commissioner, who said he would speak to the sheriff department and or roadway department and get back with me. So from there, I did speak with the sheriff department and Captain Henson, who came out and patrolled the area. I am aware and was told that officers can sit, can't sit and watch every day, but would patrol the area more. Unfortunately, any presence of officers wasn't changing the situation. For instance, today, Hart County schools were closed due to the weather by wanting everyone to stay safe. Meanwhile, by four PM today, nineteen people are blowing through the signs at the intersection and half of them were in the morning hours when the weather was the worst. Please know it's just not personal vehicles that are violating the, or not obeying the stop signs. It is county vehicles, construction vehicles, delivery vehicles, trash trucks, trucks carrying heavy vehicles with trailers. Every vehicle you can think of is at fault. I'm afraid for people injuring other people and by being negligent, and there's been a lot of close calls with campers and boats and even people walking the road. It is my hope to see a change to this intersection, especially before traffic, traffic doubles and the campground opens with more visitors, making the chances for an accident to occur higher. It's not a question of this is going to happen, but it's a question, when will it happen? According to what I've witnessed, it could be any day. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, man.
Any questions? Okay.
What, what, what would you like the county to do?
Well, I would like for a speed table to be implemented, um.
What do you, what do you mean by speed table?
It's not like a speed bump, but it's, it's a little bit flatter that it's not going to knock your.
We can do that legally. Can't do speed bumps or.
But speed tables, can't do it legally?
Municipal, municipal city limits can.
Yeah. Well, I knew my first point of contact was going to be the county commissioners, so, um, and I have spoke to Mike Cleveland and, um, and of course, you know, directed me here first.
Are you talking about rumble strips, is that what you said?
She's talking about an elevated table that's like fifteen feet long. You go up and over.
Yeah, and they're not like, yeah, they're either plastic or.
We done been down speed bumps and that kind of thing with the municipality and, well, that's the folks that's laughing here because of what happened.
Only thing they would say they're recommended for is like recreation parks, parking lots, those sorts of things.
Yeah, I get that. But I was, the way that the traffic is going is like, let's say you're leaving Paines Creek and you're going to go to Mount Olivet, well, they are leaving Paines Creek and just keeping on going, or they're coming from Mount Olivet and they're coming straight and not yielding or, um, I knew this was going to be a process, you know, I needed to have evidence of this because.
The reason for that, when they're coming out, they're kind of looking both ways.
Oh, they are looking both ways, I, I get it. I do.
It's, it's a problem all over the county, it's just not that interesting.
And I, and I understand that and that with, I'm not, at this point, I'm not really worried about the other part of the county. I'm, I see this on a daily and so there's a stop sign at Paines Creek, right? So yeah, I get it when they're taking a right and there's, they can see up the hill, nobody's coming. Okay, I get that, they don't have to really stop, but coming out of Paines Creek, you've got people coming from John Fleming and there's that stop sign that should be stopped, but it's not, and that's a T-bone waiting to happen, which I've seen people, I mean, I, I just can't explain what I've seen coming from there and people walking and people riding their bikes and people walking dogs, campers and pontoons and jet skis and there's a lot of traffic that comes down through there. And there is going to be another wreck. It's like I said, it's a matter of whim, so if the, the traffic, the traffic could be changed up. Instead of taking a right, going to Mount Olivet, you go straight to that stop sign, then cut back in the curve and go.
So then you get into changing names of roads and all that stuff and then?
Not really.
It'll be a lot of money to change that.
You're just, you're changing the flow of traffic. You're changing where the traffic goes, not the road signs.
Okay.
So if you're coming from Paines Creek, you would automatically keep going straight to that stop sign that looks ahead to Bowman Hill, and then you, if you want to go to Mount Olivet, you take a right.
That would be a pretty sharp curve for a camper.
I don't know why you eliminate that, put a stop sign on Mount Olivet Road before it turns, before it goes in the curve. But then again, I mean, you could put stop signs anywhere, people aren't going to abide by them.
People aren't abiding by them.
And so, I mean, we could do, we could spend a half million dollars up there and it's not going to fix the problem.
If you have to turn a curve, add a stop sign, now you'd have to stop to turn.
So that's the reason I suggested a speed table, because if they can go any way they want to, but they are not going to have to be flying from Paines Creek and going to Mount Olivet in one fell swoop and not slowing down, they're going to have to swoop.
The problem is though, if there's a fire truck heading to a fire, that's, that's kind of what we went down the path of Bowersville was, it was a safety hazard.
And everything else, go into the hospital on East Plain Street.
Mostly boat rents that get into the lake, those people have a serious problem because those people get those boats loaded and there's sixty mile an hour within just a few feet, it's dangerous.
So with the amount of people that disregard what's going on there now, and it's, it creases during the summertime because of, you know, we've got what, forty-four campsites down there and that doubles the traffic? So is the, my question is, we just let it go or what can be done?
Well, there's nothing that we can do. I mean, we, we have speed ordinances, so they can write speeding tickets, there's, there's speed limits on those roads. I mean, we don't have enforcement capabilities.
Oh yeah, I understand that.
And, I mean, there's, I don't know of anything else we can do.
I would like to see the traffic, flow of traffic be changed up.
And then if we don't have right of way, that gets into a big expensive process and if you do.
You don't have to have right of way to change the, to have the traffic signs walk rate.
I think you're going to have to do something up there in that curve.
And what was, what you were able to build back then may not, you can't build it today without, with the same amount of right of way. You may have to have more right of way when you start changing things.
Well, let's say, for instance, like this year, which I see all the time, a camper coming from Mount Olivet Road, they don't realize, they think the road that kind of cuts like the little pig trail road, which is John Fleming, they think that's a one-way road anyway. So they go and cut back and go, oh, well, there's the campground down there. And so they don't use a little pig trail, they think it's a one-way in and one-way out.
John Fleming Road.
It's got to go straight with its.
Yeah, John Fleming goes straight.
I understand why they think it's a one-way because it's not real wide.
Yes, so the people coming out of John, Paines Creek need to not take the right and go to Mount Olivet, they need to go straight and take the right. If that makes any sense of what I'm trying to say. So otherwise, you know, what I'm hearing is that I'm just going to have to just deal with it and let people.
When we start putting these instructions up there, when, when you start putting instructions, speed limits, whatever, and then the county assumes the liability, if there's a wreck after that point, then they come back on this, well, you told us to drive that way.
Yeah, but I don't see the difference between what's going on now and the, the wrecks that could possibly happen on the daily.
Well, I understand your concern, I, I get that, uh, however, um, we're limited on what we can do.
So you're, so you're saying that there is no way there's a, a speed table could be implemented?
We can't do that. No, we can't do that.
Like I said, they're recommended for recreation parks, uh, parking lots, uh, hospitals, social.
Somewhere it's fifteen, twenty miles per hour.
All those speed bumps in Hart County don't wreck, won't they?
So could, uh, the, the traffic, one-way in, one-way out be changed?
It's a weird, one-way.
You, like, you leaving Paines Creek, let's, let's shoot up to Bowman Hill, but there's a stop sign there. If you want to go to Mount Olivet, you take, you cut back to the right. You have to stop at that stop sign if you're going to take a right. Unlike these people coming from Paines Creek, they're just going all the way around and looking back, nobody's coming, they blow through two stop signs right there.
That's going to make campers and trailers a lot harder to make that right.
Well.
And be tight ends. I mean, so these people got thirty-six foot.
Oh, I see, but you also have that mid-circle right there you could use and, and.
It goes that right way.
So, yeah.
I don't know how much right ways up there, I think.
I don't know, I could make that turn from.
Well, you've got that circle to do something with, that circle is just basically useless.
I mean, I'm not trying to be smart, but that circle's been there for years and years and years. And, and trying to change something now.
But I'm not saying take the circle out, I'm just saying use portion of it so the campers can move, take a right.
You were talking about changing, putting stop signs and everything else, you start changing traffic flows, it causes problems. And that's why you'll notice like G Doc, when they start changing things, they've got these flashing billboards that they put out for weeks ahead of time, letting everybody know this is one of the traffic operations going to change. We don't have a PE on staff to go and make these changes. If we start changing signage and intersections, it costs us a lot of money to do that. And I'm not trying to be the bad guy here, I'm just simply stating the facts.
So the, really the outcome is, it's just going to stay the way it is?
No, what needs to happen is if people are breaking the law, they need to be cited, and that's not something this board can do.
Exactly, and then I was told by even the sheriff himself that they cannot have patrol cars just about there on a daily.
He can, he's got every, but they will increase their patrol if you ask them.
I have.
Okay.
That was back in October.
Okay, call them again, ask them to keep doing it, they'll try to do it.
And they do increase during the, uh, campus season.
They will, they will do anything they can.
Right now it's closed, so when it's open, they, they go down there multiple times during the day, I know for a fact.
Oh, I see.
They ride through there.
Oh, I can, I do see them too.
Yeah, one trooper stays out there all day.
But, but it.
No, that stops them.
Correct, correct.
He stays up very around the Rock Springs Road.
All right, well, then I guess I'll just call Mike back.
There you go.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? If not, we've got executive session, can I give a motion to, go into executive session for litigation personnel?
Give me motion to executive session.
Motion back to Commissioner Teasley, second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor. All right, it's five oh eight. Thank you.